So noting a quorum present now at City Hall, we will call to order the regular City Council meeting on Monday, November 3, 2025. The time is 6:09 PM. The first item on our agenda is a motion to amend, adopt our agenda. Counselor Singh, I'm going to provide you a drafted recommended action on this. We'll note, however, one addition if you are willing to make the motion, which is that consent agenda item 5.2 should be considered moved to our deliberative agenda as item 6.4 is the accountability list. So Counselor Singh, if you were willing to make the motion there on item 1 as the recommended action, noting that addition that I just mentioned there, that would be welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amend and adopt the agenda as follows. Add to the consent agenda item 5.18 indoor special events, entertainment permit application one day only, Seba Center, 400 Pine Street, October 31, 2025, reception and fundraiser. And the additional adopting to the deliberative agenda or removing the accountability list?
Yeah, item 5.2 to become deliberative, item 6.4.
Okay, so item 5.2 moved to the deliberative agenda as item 6.4.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Schacter. Seeing no debate on it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. And Counselor Singh, could I ask you for, well, just a moment, actually. Attorney Brown, if I could turn to you first, we have some planned executive sessions this evening. As is our practice, we turn to the City Attorney's Office first to provide some factual context as to why the council needs to enter executive session.
There are three matters on the agenda for executive session. The latter two involving litigation and the first involving budget-related and legal attorney-client privileged advice to relay to the council. And so pursuant to the recommended actions, all three matters are eligible to be discussed in executive session.
Thank you, City Attorney Brown. Based on that, Counselor Singh, could I ask for the first motion from you on the executive sessions?
To make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose purposes of providing professional legal services to the city council would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage by discussing privileged matters and attorney work product in public. And two, to move into executive session based upon the foregoing specific finding pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1F to confer with the city attorney regarding: A. Financial relief to small businesses in relation to municipal construction; to include the members of the city council, the city attorney and her staff, the mayor and her staff, the chief administrative officer and her staff, and CDO director and her staff, and the DPW director and his staff. And B. Threatening litigation regarding an election matter; to include members of the city council, the city attorney and her staff, the mayor and her staff, and the chief administrative officer and her staff. C. Issues relevant to certain class-action litigation; to include members of the city council, the city attorney and her staff, the mayor and her staff, the chief administrative officer and her staff, and the water resources director.
It's gonna be a crowded room. So absent objection, I will divide that question. The first question is to make the specific findings necessary for us to move into executive session. Is there any debate on that question? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Then the second question, based on those findings, to enter into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? We will go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Council is now in executive session. Public forum this evening is set for a time certain of 6:45 PM. Folks can stay here. We will be downstairs and be back as close to as possible to 6:45 PM as we can. Appreciate folks' patience. I know we had set public forum for a time certain of 6:45. We had started this meeting about 10 minutes late, and we're running about 10 minutes behind. So apologies, and I really appreciate folks' patience. The next item on our agenda is public forum, and we will go ahead and open public forum now at 6:55 PM. Under our council rules, we'll first hear from Burlington residents who are here in person at City Hall. We'll then hear among any Burlington residents who have signed up online. We then repeat that same process for any non-Burlington residents. As a reminder, in order to participate in public forum online, you need to have signed up at least an hour in advance through the city council's website. Each speaker, both here in person and online, will be provided two minutes. When I call your name, if you're here in person, please come forward to the table. We have a new mic setup now where you don't need to worry about the mic being on or off. It is on automatically. So please speak directly into the microphone, though, so we can hear you. For those online, we'll let you know once you've been unmuted and can go ahead and speak. When providing comments, please direct them to me as the chair and not any other individual. It's important that City Hall remain a safe place for those who serve, those in attendance, and those watching our meetings. We certainly respect and appreciate a diversity of opinions and perspectives on public issues. We ask, however, that all comments be free from individualized attacks, hate, harassment, obscenities, or other derogatory language about other people or groups based on any protected characteristic. We also ask that public comments avoid conduct which is unreasonably loud, disruptive, or discourteous. If I interrupt a speaker at any time, it will be to ask respectfully that they please continue in accordance with these rules. If someone continues to violate these rules, I reserve the right to end public comment at that point in time. So with that, we'll begin with our first speaker, who is Gregory Eppler Wood, who will be followed by Scott Lowe.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. I'm Greg Eppler Wood. I live on South Union Street. And for the past several years, I and other residents have noticed an increase in traffic and the speed of traffic, both in resident of individual as well as commercial vehicles. And so at the block party that we held a few weeks ago, I initiated a petition, and we had over 65 eager people signing it at that block party and later. And so I sent the petition, copies of the petition via email to Counselor Brown McKnight and Counselor Singh, as well as posting additional signatures on the front porch forum. And a couple of comments. I originally, the petition was from, mentions from Howard to Maine, but we heard a lot of people saying we should expand it to Shelburne Street. So thanks to Counselor Brown McKnight, she made an inquiry to the DPW Director Chapin Spencer, and he in turn contacted five others in the DPW. Philip Peterson, Senior Transportation Engineer and Planner. Calvin Withrich, or Withric, Associate Engineer. And I found out that he is, Philip Peterson is taking care of the paving in the planning, and Calvin Withrich is taking care of, he's taking the lead on traffic calming. And so all this is good news. I'm, I submitted to Laurie Olberg the petition, and it'll be on your consent agenda next meeting on November 17. And I understand that the, there are a number, does that end it right there?
That is two minutes. If you could just please wrap up.
Okay. I understand there are many reasons for delays, being funding, the fact that utilities have to be taken care of before the paving happens, and if the paving can occur with the traffic calming techniques, then it might be three years, one to three years, or perhaps more before we see the project completed. But thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Lowe, who will be followed by Ethan Kiefner.
Good evening, council members, and thank you. I noticed that on the agenda this evening that on 5.6, that you intend to waive the reading and place the communication on file. Waiving the reading and placing communication on file hinders the city's policy on transparency. There needs to be an analysis of the potential impacts on renters, affordability, equity, considerations, et cetera, as well as an open public forum and public discussion for feedback from those that you represent as counselors. Putting this on file does not allow for public opinion, which matters because over 60% of Burlington residents are renters, and higher-value homeowners don't typically want to foot the bill for a tax break on lower-value properties, not to mention the other issues that are brought up in this analysis memorandum. So I ask you to create, please put up a public speaking forum to get feedback on an analysis, and actually complete a full analysis of the impacts of the charter change spoken about in the analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ethan Kiefner, who will be followed by Yuraz Collegian.
My name is Ethan Kiefner, and I'm a member of the Student Tenant Union at UVM. At the last City Council meeting, my fellow union members and I read out a series of student testimonials. These testimonials describe the decrepit state of UVM's dorms and the university's refusal to manage them appropriately. As previously stated, one of our demands of the university is that they meet the minimum housing standards which they claim to uphold. With these testimonials, we hope to show that the University of Vermont is avoiding responsibility for keeping its dorms up to code and refusing to treat its tenants with dignity. My fellow union members and I will yield the remainder of our time to read more direct student testimonials that we've received within the past two weeks, emphasizing the photos attached.
Just, I'm going to briefly just pause for a moment here. I do know that our Civic Clerk has been acting up some, which is the portal through which folks can access our agenda, and I've been hearing from a number of folks that they're struggling to connect to our Zoom. If there is anyone who's joining through YouTube that wants to get on our Zoom, I know we do have some non-Burlington residents, or excuse me, some folks online who want to participate in public forum. What you can do is if you are able to navigate to our agenda, if you download our agenda on Civic Clerk as a PDF file, then the link to the Zoom session should be in there. I know if you just click on Agenda, you get a blue wheel that just goes on forever. But next to Agenda and Civic Clerk, there is a Download button that says Download Agenda, and if you download the agenda again as a PDF to your device, you should be able to access the link that way. So hopefully that makes sense to folks. I apologize for any inconvenience with folks trying to load the PDF within their browser itself, but wanted to note here that if folks are struggling with that but are tuned in via our YouTube Town Meeting TV stream, that you can access the Zoom that way. Our next speaker is Yuraz Collegian or Collegian, and the next speaker after that will be Benjamin Robkey.
My name is Yuraz. I am with the UVM Student Tenant Union, and I'm going to begin our testimonials for this week. September 6, 2025, Living and Learning. Sewage water bubbled up from the ground and started flooding our dorm. It trapped my roommate in the dorm because of how big the puddle was. Here we have a picture showing there the bathroom floor, clearly with rags soaking up what was there, and the floor very clearly stained. Fall 2025, Coolidge Hall. Are two showers for all the girls on our floor, including the bathtub, with no curtain, no knobs. In the picture, there is two showers and a bathtub. The floors have no drains, nothing to block the water from flowing out. There's no molding. The paint is clearly chipping from probably the moisture from the showers. There's only one curtain. October 20, 2025, Converse Hall. Exposed wiring in Converse basement, very likely a fire hazard. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Benjamin Robkey, who will be followed by Carol Livingston.
Hello. My name is Ben. I'm also a member of the UVM Student Tenant Union. I'm just gonna pick up where Yuraz left off. October 4, 2025, in Mercy Hall, my light fixture randomly fell on my friend's head, and attached is a picture of that light fixture which fell. October 15, 2025, in Richardson Hall, leak in Richardson lobby that has apparently not been fixed for a year or more. This one, I can say, was received by somebody who works for housing at UVM, and they said that in attempting to contact SOS, which is like the emergency maintenance line, they did not get an ETA. It took them well over an hour to arrive, and some of that water got, was like going into a residence dorm and causing a good amount of property damage during that time. Lastly, on October 19, 2025, in Converse Hall, the spooky thing happened three times now in the whole semester. As you can see, there's like clear leaking from the ceiling. There's also a link to see, we received a video of this. This should hopefully get into your, all of your emails after this meeting. And as Ethan said at the start, these are testimonials, some of them backdated, that we've received just in the last two weeks. This is an ongoing problem that UVM has repeatedly failed to address, which is why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last Burlington resident here in person at City Hall will be Carol Livingston. We will then turn to our one Burlington resident we have signed up online, which is Sharon Buscher. And Sharon, I believe I see your phone number online, so we should be able to turn to you there. Is Carol here?
Carol had to leave.
Carol had to leave. Okay. So with that, if we could please promote the three, well, the one phone number that's on the attendee list. Sharon, apologies for the technical difficulties this evening. I believe you're promoted, though, and should be able to unmute yourself, and when you're ready, please go ahead.
Hello? I can't hear anything. There's something wrong with the connection. This is Sharon Buscher on the phone, and if you recognize me to speak, I think I will pass on that because I'm not certain what's going on. So Zoom isn't working for me nor this phone. So, sorry. Thank you.
All right. I have some level of concern here that if Sharon can't hear us, are we sure that folks on Town Meeting TV can hear us right now? I know it's the Zoom stream that feeds to YouTube. Well, we'll contact Sharon, see if she can get on otherwise here. We do have one non-Burlington resident here in City Hall who is Sandy Harper, and then we had a Burlington resident return, so we'll turn to Sandy, and then we'll go to Gabby Orzon, if Gabby's here. Okay, great. And then we have Corinne Seda signed up online, and we'll see if we can get Sharon Buscher back. So let's go in that order. Is Sandy Harper here? Great.
Good evening, City Council, City Mayor, and the community of Burlington.
I apologize, Ms. Harper. If you could just please speak directly into the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, City Mayor, and the community of Burlington. My name is Sandy Harper. I am here because my son has been missing from North Burlington for one year. Our son Chris came up to Vermont in September 2005 for college. He attended Johnson State College and graduated with a degree in alternative medicine. Most of the time in Vermont, Chris lived over by Smuggs Notch up in North Country and in Jeffersonville. He moved to Burlington about two, two and a half years ago. Last November, he walked out of the home he was living in and has not been seen since. My husband Jesse and I have been actively involved with the Burlington Police Department. You may have seen the posters we have hung everywhere in town every time we come up. Chris loves Vermont. He loves hiking. He loves the outdoors. He is a doer, a thinker, an artist, a writer, and a very hard-working guy. He is a kind and very caring person who loves his family and friends. We have met so many kind and helpful people in Vermont since Chris's disappearance, and it has really touched our hearts, and we want to thank you all. If anyone has any information or any, anything you could tell us about our son Chris, please contact the Burlington Police Department. I have a flyer for each of you. If I could give it to you and Jesse and everyone. I appreciate it all. I just want to find him, and I hope the city and the community can help us find him. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Harper. We will turn now to Gabby Orzon, and then we'll turn to Corinne Seda online. I do think one of the issues here may be, and sorry for working through these technical difficulties live here on the fly, I think that perhaps, I see, I know that we as a city are logged in under Catherine Shod's name, and it appears that we are muted. I'm wondering if there's a way to unmute ourselves, and we'll see if that, I don't know if that has something to do with it. So, no. Now I, okay. We'll test that one more time. I do not hear the echo anymore. No, no. All right. I'm not sure what the issue is in terms of why folks on Zoom can't hear us, but we should go ahead and mute again because now we're getting feedback in City Hall. I know that the YouTube stream is working, but for some reason, folks on Zoom cannot hear us. So, sorry again about working through those technical difficulties here. Gabby, we'll turn to you now, and then if Corinne Seda can hear us online, then we'll turn to Corinne.
Hi, I'm Gabby Grusan. I'm a part of the UVM Student Tenant Union, and my fellow union members just gave an intro and read more testimonies, and I just wanted to wrap things up regarding our statement. So basically, the Student Tenant Union, over the past, over a year, we started about September of last year. We've had one meeting with the head of the Residential Life Department, Charles Holmes Hope, and we've had about five to six meetings with his direct superior, Erica Calagero, the Vice Provost of Student Affairs. They have shown minimal sympathy for our cause, and they will not meet our demands regarding basic standard safety and habitability of residence halls. They will not meet our demands regarding comprehensive gender-inclusive housing. They will not meet our demands regarding full transparency of budgets and the state of the residence halls. They will not meet minimum accessibility standards. UVM is not ADA compliant, and very openly, they have expressed to us that our demands of basic housing decency are too burdensome on the university, and it would cost too much. Meanwhile, the university has over $800 million in an endowment, and we know that that could be liquidated. They can easily liquidate a significant portion, a significant portion of that very quickly to, you know, make the dorms habitable for students, because as you guys have heard, there's leaks, there's mold. People have mold poisoning, people have to live with rats, silverfish, ladybugs, stink bugs, various other pests in their dorms. Basically, UVM does not treat students the way that they should, and again and again, they show that. There's a general negligence for student well-being when it comes to housing and when it comes to many other things at the University of Vermont, and clearly, our negotiations with UVM administration have not helped, which is why we have come to the council meetings these past two weeks, and we'll be here again. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one additional speaker signed up for public forum, and that's Corinne Seda online. If we could please promote Corinne. And Ms. Seda, if you can hear us, you should please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Can I be heard?
Yeah, can you unmute?
Y'all can hear me. I'm that girl, okay? Put the timer on. Thank you, sir. All right, once again, I'm here because I've been tried, and typically, I'm a loving cow, even though I'm cute and petite, but you know, I told you guys my purpose all the time, is to show, especially the courts, that these women are not well. That is my life purpose. We're so focused on men not being well, but we forget these women. And once again, I'm a loving cow, but you know, I can be a bull. And I told the mayor, because I can address her name, that once again, if you want to play with someone, make sure you can play. I am nothing but pressure. I was born in April, I am nothing but pressure. For someone who already knows, oh, girl, hold on. For someone who already knows that she cannot handle pressure, trying a girl like me makes no sense. Okay? So once again, I'm gonna be on it over and over till they're, you know what? I'm a little too hyped right now because I really can't believe I was tried. I really can't believe I was tried, and I don't care how many times I have to keep coming here so they know I'm not the one to play with. Every time they're like, "You're always suing people, you're always suing people," because I don't play with these girls, okay? If I have to show the court, if I have to show Judge Crawford that these women are haters, if I have to show that Judge Judy wannabe judge in the Superior Court who these women are, that's what I'm going to do. It is my life purpose. Be careful who you play with, because some girls can really play, and they'll continue to play till you learn that the game is rigged against you. Because you know what wins? Pure-hearted women, strong women, powerful women, not hating-ass women, not sabotaging-ass women. It's the powerful women who don't hate on other women and let other women succeed and not do weird, weirdo activities behind the scene. So you know what? I'm hyped right now because I'm about to do a Brazilian workout, but either way, I'm gonna continue to let you know I am not the one to play with, girl. If I have to show up in person or not, play these games, and you'll play, you'll win these, whatever Taylor Swift said, stupid games. I'm gonna win a lawsuit. That's what I'm gonna win from you. So that's how we're gonna win my game. Tell them, Jessica, tell them.
... at 7:17 PM now. Before continuing with our regular City Council meeting, we do have a very brief local control commission agenda with just a consent agenda on it. I will recess the City Council meeting at 7:18 PM and call to order our meeting as a local control commission at that same time. The first item on our agenda there is a motion to adopt our agenda. Commissioner Broderick, could I turn to you as Chair of our License Committee for a motion on our agenda?
I move to amend and adopt the agenda as indicated on Civic Clerk.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Newbezer. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. And then, as mentioned, the only item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioner Broderick, could I ask you for a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda and take the actions indicated.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Newbezer. Is there any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Seeing no other business before the local control commission, I will adjourn that meeting at 7:19 PM and resume our meeting as the City Council. The next item on our City Council agenda is Mayor, General City Affairs. So Mayor, when you're prepared, we'll turn the floor to you.
Thank you very much, Council President Travers. I'd like to begin, as I normally do, with a community health and safety update in terms of updates on from the city. The first thing I'd like to make sure the community is aware of is on this Thursday, November 6, we'll be holding a webinar, an informational webinar on overdose prevention center, our progress in this work, but more importantly, a panel of experts, including from Rhode Island, where they operate an active OPC for the last several months. So the, again, the panel will have local and out-of-state folks, including local experts from our community here in Burlington. It's designed as a webinar, so folks can come and ask questions. We will hope that a lot, many people will be able to partake in this. We're promoting the information online to sign up. It's a register-only opportunity for the webinar. We're also putting out information on front porch forums, so folks will hopefully see the link and be able to participate. The second thing I want to mention is that our Situation Table has been underway weekly since July, and on October 22, I had an opportunity to sit in in this confidential space, signing an NDA, of course, to be able to observe what happens in these rooms weekly. Indeed, there continues to be 40-plus providers who routinely send representatives from places like our designated mental health agency, Howard Center, to Safe Recovery, to the street outreach team, to Burlington School District even is at the table. outreach team, to Burlington School District even is at the table. And it was quite a remarkable thing to observe very generically, because the ability for astute problem-solving, for continuing to bring back cases that have still not been resolved to reduce the risk level of individuals who are causing harm to themselves or others in the community. It was really impactful to be able to observe that. At that same meeting, just by chance, the new special prosecutor appointed by the governor as part of the Community Accountability Court was present and immediately started to participate in the Situation Table very organically, even wound up presenting a case of an individual who is in the courts in that special docket, and was able to kind of work the system and learn how to submit a new case to the table for consideration. What I found most helpful from being able to meet Zach, who's the new prosecutor, forgive me, I didn't write down his last name before I prepped my remarks tonight, but he already sees in the mere two weeks, at that point it was three days, but two weeks of being the prosecutor in this special docket, of immediate gaps in what's been causing this sort of rinse-and-repeat scenario where people get cited, they go to court for their first hearing, they're simply given a piece of paper, and they walk out the door. And many of these people, we know, are leaving that courtroom with very few supports, lack of family, lack of just basic needs and the foundation for which would actually allow someone to be productively engaging in the Accountability Court system. So I really appreciated his perspective so far. I think he's going to be a really strong asset in this short-term pilot of the next three months of the Community Accountability Court. I also want to mention, as people probably saw, and we updated council late last week, our Chief of Police, Chief Sean Burke, and the Vermont State Police reached an agreement on how to begin to experiment with additional support from state law enforcement. I wanted to share with the public what that looks like. So again, in response to the governor's short-term action plan that we worked with him and his team to produce this 14 points to it, one of those points was around coordinated additional support on law enforcement for the city under the coordination and direction of our chief. And so the Department of Public Safety coordinated with our chief and our Burlington Police Department to arrange for additional support in Burlington from the dates of November 1st to December 31st of this calendar year. The support covers three different things, again, led by Chief Burke's assessment on what would be useful for us, and it's in alignment with what Burlington's community safety priorities really are. The first being deploying up to four Vermont State Troopers to conduct foot patrols in the Churchy Marketplace area and City Hall Park between noon and 8:00 PM daily. This is very contingent on voluntary sign-ups, so it's not a guarantee. I also want to note that this is through state resources, because as folks know, we have very limited resources locally, so I do appreciate this partnership from the state. The second piece of this is that there'll be high-visibility traffic enforcement, so folks are on notice, from the DMV, which can stop and cite people for traffic violations, DMV is the Department of Motor Vehicles, on Route 127 during the weekday commuter hours. So I just want to make sure that we've heard feedback a lot on traffic and the issues of traffic, and I hope this will begin to be able to bolster, which is really a fundamental safety issue, and to bring that behavior a little bit more under check. The third and final piece so far of this conversation, again, with the state and our city, is to continue the partnership between the Department of Liquor and Lottery Investigations and the BPD Uniform Services in conducting licensee compliance inspections. You just had your licensing board meeting. This is again to help us bolster that work, to make sure that people are in compliance who serve liquor in our community, and I guess lottery as well, but liquor is more of our concern, and making sure again that we're supplementing where we can better use our police officers in other more impactful areas locally. And I just want to emphasize again, we really appreciate law enforcement officers on the state level coming to Burlington and signing up on a voluntary basis. I met two State Troopers, I happen to be walking out of City Hall today. They have said they've received a really welcomed feedback about appreciation of them being here, and they're really emerging in in a complimentary way to our police department and our officers here, so I appreciate that coordination, and we will see how this goes and report back to all of you. If you can see on the screen, I don't usually have visuals, but I have a visual tonight. So I'm pleased to say we finally have the police chief survey. This is being operated by our search firm. We have it in several languages, as you can see up there, and that's what's called a QR code, so we will have these unprintouts at the mayor meetups and in multiple places, but if you zoom in, and maybe Counselor Schechter could tell me, did it pop up, maybe? Oh, right, excellent. I was like, I don't know if that's too big or too small or too blurry. But anyway, this is a short survey to help the city be able to build the candidate profile for our next chief of police. And so the premise being here that our search firm came just last week and did its first site visit and met with many stakeholders, including city councilors, our rank-and-file at the Burlington Police Department, and many other stakeholders in our community to get their input on what do we really need right now in our next chief. And so this is a survey for everybody to be able to participate in and provide your feedback and add your two cents on this. We're also going to be working with our TCVs, our trusted community voices, colleagues, to make sure that we do even more to get into communities where English is not the primary language and/or a good point of engagement to make sure all aspects of our community get a voice in this hiring process. You can take that down, Erin, if you want. Thank you. I appreciate it. So I want to move on now to finances. Last Friday, yes, last Friday, we were able to announce Moody's Ratings, which is our financial rating system with that financial entity around what our current rating system is, and we moved from an AA3 rating to an AA2 rating, and this is the first upgrade in this determination since 2019. And I want to just bring this to the public's attention, because this signals the strong health of the city finances for many years of work, but what happens at the sort of brass tacks here is that it lowers our interest rates when we go out to bond or take on more debt. This is extremely important, considering that voters very generously supported three big bonds at the last town meeting day. We have other needs within the city. This is a really good thing long-term for the city and taxpayers, because it helps bring some level of relief on the debt service, which is one of our squinter tax that makes up your property tax bill. I really want to thank the staff for their due diligence over many years of helping us get to this point, but I also want to note that Moody's specifically noted our work in the last couple of years around the structural issues to our budget, calling that specifically out. And while the budget cycles have been very hard in the last two years since I've been mayor, this is much worthy work, because it does impact how other third-party financial agencies view the work and view the status of the city's finances, and this gives me great confidence that we are headed in the right direction. I want to note that on the agenda, and sorry again for navigating Civic Clerk, I'm not sure what's going on with Civic Clerk, but I don't think it's a city issue, I think it's a Civic Clerk issue, the software, but you'll see a memo that I presented at Board of Finance earlier today on the closeout of fiscal year '25. It is a new thing for the city to do in terms of providing a memo from the mayor at the end of a fiscal year. When I became mayor, I benefited from many beginning of a fiscal year memos from mayors of past, especially Mayor Weinberger, saying, "These are our intentions for the upcoming year. These are our assumptions for the upcoming year. This is our plan." But there was never a closeout, so you sort of never heard the end of the story to know, did that thing ever happen, or did something happen in the last 12 months that made that not possible for any reason? So in my administration, we are going to try back to transparency, consistency, and predictability, be able to close out the year. We have not received our audited financials, so it's not specific on the numbers to a T, those will come in January, but we know enough to be able to give high-level observations. I encourage you to read it. We try to write it very plainly, so you could track where were our intentions in the beginning of the year and where did we land. A small piece to say in terms of good news is that we anticipate, we'll see what the auditor's final numbers are, a small surplus from fiscal year '25, and with a potential to maybe have that be a little bit bigger, which again shows good due diligence of both spending and the balancing of that among departments throughout fiscal year '25. Because we have to talk about multiple budget years all at once, jumping two years ahead, fiscal year '27, I want the council to know that we will be providing the first update on our initial projections for fiscal year '27 and how that's beginning to shape up, what the budget gap is looking like it might become or will be, and our initial ideas on how to close that structural budget gap again. That will be at the Board of Finance on November 17th. I want to thank everyone for their initial discussion on the charter change tax policy ideas from a meeting or so ago. Those two ideas again were a homestead exemption, a universal exemption for homesteads in the city, as well as an inflator to be added to our general fund tax rate to help us with the ongoing inflationary nature of running a large organization like the city. We heard your feedback around continued analysis relating to mitigating impacts on renters and curiosities on the balancing the needs of businesses, as well as, of course, the ultimate issue of affordability for residents of this community, and how do we continue to make sure that folks are not priced out of our city, that the workforce that makes many businesses be able to operate, the city able to operate, and of course, the residents are able to maintain their residency in Burlington and do so by looking at these tax policy ideas. So I appreciate the curiosity, and we will continue in the coming weeks to present more education to the Charter Change Committee, to the Board of Finance, but also more in the coming weeks to the public. Briefly moving on to housing, as folks know, this is a year that we are, Burlington as a city, is a member of the City Leadership Initiative, which is a Bloomberg Harvard partnership for 47 mayors around the world. We are using this opportunity to devise solutions to our housing shortage issues, but specifically the affordability housing stock or lack for folks who are seeking both affordable rental and permanent housing opportunities, but also size and scope for folks who cannot find the housing that they need. This is an opportunity to leverage government innovation and to also look creatively of how we do housing strategy that leverages public assets like public land to build public collective wealth, and I'm really excited about the extra expertise that we have that's been merging into these conversations and the real cross-department, and really all levels of the organization on this team of about a dozen city staff who are working alongside Bloomberg to be able to kind of really accelerate our thinking in this next year. I was joined by a couple of councilors at the Cots Way Station ribbon cutting, it was a purple ribbon, which is their color, over on Pearl Street, because they finally completed the conversion of what was an emergency weather shelter, low barrier from last winter, to a new way station with 56 beds, shelter beds at the old federal building. This is a high-barrier shelter, but it creates some permanency of 56 more beds for folks who, as we all know, we're living in through a historically high time of unhoused people in our city. And when I say unhoused, I mean not sheltered at all, because we have maxed out all shelter beds at this point. I really appreciate the work of Cots, all of the funders who've helped make this possible, as well as the city council's support in being able to make sure we could sign off on a federal being, a building being able to be transferred to vacant building to local use to support those in most need. Also, last thing on housing this week, actually, I believe today, Seda welcomed our new housing manager from the city of Boston. Maggie joins us, and she was the former director of the Investigation Unit for the Fair Housing work within the city of Boston, and she'll help round out our housing team within Seda, so we're really excited to welcome her to the city of Burlington. A couple of staff updates. We want to thank our city assessor, Joe Turner, for his years of service to the city. He had a great opportunity to return him to North Carolina, which is his home state. I'd like to thank Joe for his leadership on the Tax Fairness Working Group, as well as getting the city ready for our next reassessment and really applying some lessons learned from our last reassessment process where we can do stronger communication and engagement with taxpayers. We can make the process both more proactive of knowing it's coming up and how do you understand how to do appeals, language access, some really fundamentals that through his leadership will put us in a better position when that comes. We have, because the assessor right now, after Monica, reports to our CAO, Catherine has appointed an interim assessor, Tracy Isham, who works within our Department of Finance and Administration right now. Her current role oversees a collection of property taxes for the last eight years, but prior to that, she was the city assessor in the town of Colchester. We are finally moving on to our last interim hiring process amongst the many department heads in the city, and that will be the HR director position, so look for more information on that soon. Tonight on the agenda, we will be putting forward our latest candidate for a department head opening, Phil Lewis, and I'll share more on that in just probably a few minutes here, but we're very excited that he has joined us in person, and I look forward to introducing you to him for your consideration for confirmation. And one last miscellaneous, it's not really staff-related. As you might recall, a year ago, we began setting department-level goals to help create an overall strategy for the city that was coordinated under the three big headers of community safety, housing, and climate. We have finalized that work from virtually all departments, or Parks will be the last one, as hopefully Phil Lewis begins as the department head with your confirmation, but we will bring back a high-level overview of that summary of all those goals to your next council meeting, and that's again a continuation of the work that we put in place last year, so you are clear about what our goals are on a department level. A few community events to let the folks know about. There was a really joyous event at the Richard Kemp Center. Richard Kemp, of course, is a former city councilor. I believe the first black man to serve on this council, served from the South End. He, the center, this community center is named in his honor. There was a beautiful mural that was added to the very large wall on the east side of that building, which if you travel down, what is it, North Willard, right before the Community Health Center, I really encourage everyone to take a look. It's a beautiful piece. It might even be my favorite from Juniver Creative, which is the pair of artists who put up many murals in our community and elsewhere in the state. So we were able to bless and celebrate this new beautiful piece of art, and it really brightens up that part of the Old North End, and congratulations to the Kemp Center. I want to note that we, actually, President Counselor, President Counselor, President City Counselor, Ben Travers, and I have been engaging many faith leaders in our community over the last several months, and we've been trying to engage, and from the angle of talking about really difficult topics in our city, one entry point has been the Israel-Gaza struggle and the complexities for which that has brought to our community to engage on such a painful issue on all sides, and really opening up through these relationships with faith leaders around how do we improve our community muscle to be able to engage in what is deeply personal and deeply connected, but also has been a very hard moment of community engagement and democracy here in our city. Just want to appreciate these faith leaders. I was going to print out the list, but I actually forgot to bring it with me, but I want folks to know that this has been the growth of a few months of commitment of their time. We've used a sort of a dialogue circle format with the CJC, and I have found it actually a really powerful way to deepen relationships and not to get to a place of othering based on assumptions around someone's attachment to an issue. I think the restorative and dialogue circles are a really powerful tool for us to learn from largely, more largely in the community, to consider even amongst the council themselves and other bodies where struggle is real, and we want to be able to model better ways of being in community with each other, especially in these times where political rhetoric and divisiveness and harm is so prevalent. It's a really interesting model, and I just want to express some appreciation for our faith leaders. Bikes, next one. So if you haven't been to Letty Park in the New North End, the Letty Park opened our first and only so far mountain bike path, and my kid and I got to ride over it, and she made fun of me on Town Meeting TV for squealing, apparently, because I'm not a mountain biker, but it was a lot of fun, and I encourage people to check it out before the snow flies. It's really a fun and joyful new investment in our bike infrastructure. And also for bikes, the Local Motion and Old Spokes Home celebrated their 16th annual roll and stroll, which is a great, joyous costume bike ride that dozens and dozens of people took part in, started at City Hall Park, went throughout the whole city. It was a really fun event, again, bringing livelihood into our downtown. And one more positive, because there's positive things happening in our community, next time you're out at the airport, just know that we have opened the newly renovated Burlington School District, so the Burlington Technical Center's Aviation Education Center. So this is also our automotive program is also stationed out of it. What used to be a very broken-down circa Amelia Earhart-era kind of hangar was completely transformed to a beautiful new modern building and facility right next to Beta. For now, not only Burlington students, but also students from around the region to come learn about aviation and automotive technology. Our airport leadership was there, we were able to provide some amount of resources because we leasing the land to them, but a former US Senator, Patrick Leahy, secured a $10 million grant, which made this whole thing possible. So it's really, I hope you check out pictures or get to visit, but it was, it's an impressive investment in our youth, and next up soon will be the new high school. So some really powerful things are happening for our young people. And finally, I just want to mention a couple of things for our departments, and I'll wrap up there. Our Burlington Electric Department, on the November 19th, I believe at 9:00 AM, will be holding an informational meeting for commercial properties who are interested in solar panels and solar installation, and how to gather some more information, how BED can partner with other entities out there. It's a hybrid meeting, so 9:00 AM on November 19th, to be able to help to activate that, again, alternative energy source, which I think will be helpful for a lot of our business partners. The airport, back to the airport for a second, just to toot their good news a little bit or to amplify it. They ended the fiscal year with a record number of outbound passengers since fiscal year '09, so in the last 10-plus years, with 717,000 people being outbound passengers, so choosing Leahy BTV as their point of departure airport. Plan BTV 2050 is doing an NPA roadshow. This is our big comprehensive plan, so hopefully at your next NPA, I've heard councilors have been attending and participating, so thank you. There'll be other opportunities to engage in that, but it's the vision of where we want the city to be, so I continue to encourage folks to take part in that. And then two- And then two final ones, we're doing the first ever fall cleanup through DPW, which means cleaning up of all of the leaves largely in the streets, and that's happening between November 5th and 13th. There's an interactive map on our DPW website to help you know where they'll be sweeping so you can be prepared. This helps our lake quality and it also helps protect against flooding, which I'm sure people have seen in these rainstorms, there's real impact when we aren't on top of that. And then finally, and it's not just because we're sitting over in the chairs, the Fletcher Library is here tonight with our friends, and on their agenda, on the agenda tonight, your agenda is the, finally, we've gotten to the point of an MOU, Board of Finance acted on this at our last meeting. But this represents a really firm and big step forward in the renovation process of our beautiful library and the deep partnership with our friends of Fletcher Free, who have been very diligent in their commitment, and it is, it honestly would not happen without them, so I appreciate their partnership throughout, and I'm excited to get to work, and this MOU is an expression of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us now to our consent agenda. Is there a motion on our consent agenda?
So moves.
A motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended, take the actions indicated, Councilor Schacter?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Councilor McKnight, any discussion on that motion? Yes. I believe, Councilor Litwin, you're asking whether or not item 5.2 has been moved to the deliberative agenda? Yes. Okay. Seeing no other discussion? Oh, Councilor Grant?
Thank you. I just wanted to express a concern that I've had about the minutes. I will first say that I understand that in order to save money on staffing, given the continued efforts to maintain the finances of the city in good standing, as we were recently rewarded by Moody's, but I am concerned that the minutes have really been cut back so much that they may not be useful to the public. Now, we do have the full meeting for people to actually watch, but not everyone has the time to do that, and sometimes the minutes, although I understand that they can't give the detail that they used to, that more details, especially if councillors speak on an item, should be included and that we should make sure that if we do change the agenda in any way, that that is also clearly indicated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Does anyone else want to speak to this item, Councilor Broderick?
Yes, I just wanted to flag that agenda item five. Okay, I actually just up, refreshed my computer, and now it says that it's been moved. It originally said on the agenda that it was removed from the agenda, not moved to deliberative, but it's been fixed. Sorry.
I just want to clarify here, are you referring to item 5.18?
I'm referring to item 5.2, but it's been corrected. It originally said this item has been removed, but it now says now agenda item 6.4.
Correct. Yes, it's now item 6.4. Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments on the consent agenda? Councilor Litwin?
I'll be brief. I wanted to just mention that I understand Councilor Grant's concerns as I look at the meeting minutes and think that there's opportunity for discussion there. I would encourage anybody who's concerned, this body, to think about reaching out to our CIO to talk about how maybe we could leverage AI tools to better support minutes so that it's not a huge drain, but we can still offer, because I take Councilor Grant's point, a written record, which is also just better for accessibility as well, to have both video and written.
Thank you, Councilor Litwin. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right. All in favor of the motion, then please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. So that brings us now to our deliberative agenda, and Mayor, we are excited to hear more about your appointment of Phil Lewis to the position of Director of Department of Parks Recreation and Waterfront. So Mayor, when you're prepared, we'll turn the floor to you.
Thank you very much. So Phil, this is the magical desk I talked about, so, or large table, if you want to join us up front. I'm pleased to present to the city council and to the public Phil Lewis, who is joining us this evening at the table, and to present him as the, as my appointment to fill the position, the vacant position of the Director of Parks Recreation and Waterfront for the city of Burlington. Phil Lewis has spent the last 25 years holding progressively more responsible, sorry, progressively responsible management positions in the field of parks and recreation, and most recently serving as the CEO and General Manager. I'm going to try the name of this community, so don't laugh at me, because I feel like there's probably a local, better way to say this than like the Vermonters version, but Casumnas?
Very close.
Oh, you're very generous, okay. But it's a community service district, so the form of government is different out there for this particular role, so it's a district that's located in Elk Grove, California. And this role had many several facets to it, including as a special district being responsible for overseeing fire, emergency medical, and parks and recreation for a population of over 200,000 residents. He also managed a $203 million annual operating and capital budget, and indirectly supervised upwards to 400 full-time and 1,000 total represented and non-represented, meaning union and non-union personnel. Prior to this, Mr. Lewis was already a Parks Recreation professional by being the Parks and Rec Administrator for that same community, which I'm not going to try again, sorry, for that service district. He holds a degree, a master's degree in Parks Recreation and Tourism Management from the North Carolina State University, and a bachelor's degree in Public Administration from Eastern Oregon University. We had a great opportunity throughout his interviewing process to learn a lot about his skills, and one of the most insightful pieces was when our team engaged his many references around his professionalism in these prior roles. And they all noted that Phil is an excellent listener who really works to build trust. They also noted he is an exceptional professional who really values collaboration and community engagement, and we all know that community engagement is sort of like the, a big aspect of the city of Burlington, and people really expect that from the public servants here around being able to adequately answer questions, to explain judgment calls, et cetera. And his references went on to say Phil thinks deeply about his decisions and is very much able to explain his reasoning to many stakeholders, and so that would be a great skill for here in the city. Finally, he can really develop a compelling vision, and I think that's really helpful in all the transition that's happened recently within our Parks Recreation and Waterfront Department, especially in this time. And as I look to appoint leaders in our departments, I really think about what's needed right now in the next three to five years in particular. And the combinations of skills that Phil presents to us is really a great asset and a great win for the city of Burlington, especially in these times. So want to remind folks that we did a nationwide search, he's here from California, obviously, for this position. We conducted two rounds of interviews with the finalist candidates. The interview panel included representatives from the city departments, including department heads and city staff within the Parks Department. It also included a city council representative, thank you to Councilor Newbyzer for serving in that role, as well as a member of the Parks Commission and a representative from my office. I really always appreciate when we can get folks, have a diversity of viewpoints as we vet folks to be in these important leadership roles within our department. And upon confirmation, Phil will join us officially beginning on November 25th as he begins to transition his family here to Vermont. I have an opportunity to meet with him today, and I really think he's going to fit in very well within our city, and welcome to the city, Phil. And if you want to just say anything else, you want to add to your background or points of interest, please feel free to do so now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council President Travers, members of council, and thank you to the mayor for your support and leadership, bringing me on to this role. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I have spent 25 years, as stated, working in Parks Recreation, and it really is a passion of mine, connecting people to the natural environment, being a steward of the public land, and making sure that we're providing inclusive experiences for all members of our community. I have had a chance to interact a lot with the staff as well today, leading up to this confirmation hearing, and I'm very excited to work side by side with the professionals within the department to really provide a superior service delivery to this community. I'm also very excited to get out and get to meet all of the community members. As stated, I really feel that that's the best part of public service, is really connecting with the community, so I look forward to connecting with stakeholders and community members in the next several months and in years as we, again, continue to build this department and provide top service to our community. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and I really, again, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. Before turning to council for any questions or comments, I would welcome a motion to confirm the appointment of Phil Lewis to the position of the Director of Department of Parks Recreation and Waterfront. Thank you, Councilor Bergman. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Councilor Bergman, did you want the floor at this point, or? Just thought I would ask as a courtesy. Yeah, thank you. Just to be brief, it was a pleasure to meet you, even though it was only briefly, and I look forward to you joining this great city and this great team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Litwin?
Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you at one of the meetings that the mayor's office set up, which I appreciated. I did want to welcome you to Vermont and pre-welcome, I guess, in advance, your family, and I hope that your transition is smooth. And I appreciate that you're stepping up into this role, and so I think I would have liked to meet you first because I wanted to talk to you offline, but you're coming into an apartment that our city is very proud of, and the folks who live in Burlington, whether you've lived here for just a few years or your whole life, really value our parks and also the employees that keep those parks clean and running and amazing programs that we put out. And you're coming in at a really difficult time, so it's going to be, I'm going to be looking for like empathic, empathetic leadership, you know? They have a low morale right now, they've lost a lot of employees, that many of whom they worked with for a very long time, and the public as well is confused about, you know, what programs are still running and what isn't. Buildings are somewhat accessible, not accessible anymore, and things are changing. So I'm looking forward to your optimism, it sounds like, and hope that you're able to hold our employees up that have really worked very hard without a director for a while and went through a very difficult budgetary riff process. So thank you for coming, and I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you.
Councilor Litwin, is there anyone else that wishes to be recognized on this motion? Councilor Newbyzer?
Yeah, just very briefly, I'm just really excited for you to take on this role, for you to welcome to the city. Yeah, I'm really grateful that you're taking on the challenge and look forward to working with you to provide strong recreational programs to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Newbyzer. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? All right, well, I'll just take a moment here briefly, usually I don't, but I'll just take a moment here just to say that, as Councilor Litwin mentioned, our parks are near and dear to the heart of so many folks in our community. Councilor Barlow and I, as I mentioned to you downstairs earlier, previously served on the Parks Commission before joining the city council. I do want to express gratitude to the Trident, as they've called themselves, and Sophie Sauvay, Erin Moreau, and Derek Roach, and their leadership for this department, but I'm very excited for you to join, Phil, and I'm particularly excited about your background in recreational programming. So with that, I look forward to moving to a vote here. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item 6.2, Proposed Changes to BED Miscellaneous Service Fees. On this item, I know that we're joined by BED General Manager Darren Springer and Emily Stebbins-Willock. I will mention to folks that this comes to us with the recommendation from the Board of Finance with some updated language, which has been updated on Civic Clerk, which is the same recommended action that had been previously posted, but with the addition that in making requests of the Public Utility Commission, that that request include and ask that this new fee schedule not take effect any earlier than March 31st of 2026. So that should be posted on Civic Clerk now, and just wanted to note that for folks. But General Manager Springer and Stebbins-Willock, thank you for being here, and we'll turn the floor to you.
With apologies for those who have heard this presentation a couple times at Board of Finance, we just wanted to share a little context about these miscellaneous fees and glad to answer questions. So these are fees that are discreet to a particular customer, as opposed to things that are more general and go into electric rates. We hadn't updated them for a number of years, and we had a constituent come to our Electric Commission and suggest that one of our fees was higher than it needed to be based on new technology. He ended up being correct, and so we did a pretty exhaustive review of all of our miscellaneous fees over the last several years. We actually brought them to the Board of Finance and to the council and had them approved previously, but in bringing them to the PUC and meeting with the Department of Public Service, they identified a couple of issues that required some additional correction, and in doing that, we figured we should bring them back to the board and the council so we could update with fiscal year '26 numbers. So the list of fees that are changing, that are new, that may be in some cases deleted, is all in the memo. And of note, per Council President Travers comments, we have a fee that we're going to make sure we educate customers about relative to if we have to roll a truck and send a crew to pull a meter and then roll a truck and send a crew to reinstall a meter, that's going to be a new fee. In some cases, that might apply if somebody was updating their electric panel, it might be that they're doing a home renovation or another project. We're going to let our customers know if they have one of these projects that is in the works, that we're going to be filing these fees at the Public Utility Commission, that they would take effect no earlier than March 31st, 2026, and if you have a project you are considering and you want to advance it before the fees take effect, to try to do that. On the other side, we have fees that are going down. The fee that was the original item that was requested to be reviewed was a $30 fee. Every time we had a rental property where a tenant was changing over and the account was changing, that was a $30 fee using our previous fee structure. With newer technology and smart meters, that now is going to be a $5 fee, so there will be savings that are passed on to customers in that sense. So it's almost revenue neutral, it's not quite revenue neutral, but utility practice in Vermont dictates that the so-called cost causer is supposed to pay, so where we can discreetly identify a cost in the system that is specific to a customer, we're supposed to charge the customer the fee. If it's a more generalized cost, then it goes into rates. But maybe I'll stop there. Emily might have anything to add, and we're happy to answer questions.
Before turning to any questions, Councilor Barlow, as Chair of the Tuke, could I turn to you for a motion on this item?
Certainly. I would move to approve and authorize the General Manager of the Burlington Electric Department or their designee to file tariff amendments and supporting documents with the Vermont Public Utility Commission, requesting changes in the Burlington Electric Department's miscellaneous service fees as proposed, provided BED will request of the PUC that these changes take effect no earlier than March 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Councilor Barlow. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilor Carpenter. Councilor Barlow, did you want to be recognized on this item?
No.
Okay. Councilor Litwin, I think I saw your hand.
Thanks. I just have one question, really, you know, I read through the document, it's all pretty straightforward. I think anybody, once Civic Clerk is working perfectly for everyone, could easily understand what's changing and what it used to be. However, I do have some questions and concerns that I'm hoping However, I do have some questions and concerns that I'm hoping you can possibly answer for me, particularly around power problem investigation for customer responsibility both during hours and after hours. For during hours, that is a 500% roughly increase. After hours, it jumps from $195 to $562. My biggest concern here, and I know like I'll always say, let's stay revenue neutral as much as possible in our departments, but is I represent an area with a lot of old homes and a lot of folks with probably aging electrical in their homes, and it's a modest income area of Burlington, and so I'm a little worried. Some of those folks have lived in their homes for 40, 50 years. Some were born in the homes that they live in, and they might not know that it was their problem, and then suddenly they're hit with a big bill. So, one, can you kind of demystify this for me? And two, is there a mechanism whereby somebody could, if they were hit with this fee, apply for a waiver, a consideration similar to what we do with tax abatement?
Great. Just to clarify the kind of the fee at issue here, so this would be a situation where somebody calls up Burlington Electric and says, hey, my lights are flickering, I think there's a problem with the service coming into my home from Burlington Electric. And we would talk to them and might try to help them identify that it could be an issue on their side of the service essentially, as opposed to the Burlington Electric side of the service. And this fee would only be charged when a customer says, I want you to send a truck and a crew out because I think it's your issue, not on the customer's side.
And the fee would be communicated to them as part of that communication.
Right. We would be very straightforward.
This is what we will charge you if.
Do you still want us to roll the truck?
Yeah.
Now, after hours, the difference obviously being that we have IBW contract, we have to pay overtime, a three-hour minimum call, so that's why that's more expensive than during the day. But these are updated with current labor rates, current truck service rates, haven't been updated in a period of time, so that's kind of why the jump. But this would only be that type of circumstance. If we send a truck and the problem is on our side, there is no fee to the customer whatsoever. If a customer had this fee and they were unable to, you know, pay for it in a single bill cycle, we do have budget payment plans that are available for customers who are struggling to pay their bills, so that might be applicable as well. I don't know, any other thoughts or?
Okay. So you would troubleshoot with them over the phone at no cost to first try and identify if it's their problem, and then you would very clearly disclose this rate and get their consent before coming out?
Exactly.
Okay. Thanks. I'm all set.
Thank you, Councilor Litwin. Does any other councillor wish to be recognized on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to a vote then. All in favor of the motion made by Councilor Barlow, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now turn to item 6.3, A Resolution Strengthening the Relationship Between the City Administration, City Council, and Neighborhood Planning Assemblies. This comes to us through the CDNR Committee, but Councilor Newbeeser, you were the original sponsor in this resolution, and I would be happy to turn the floor to you to introduce this resolution. I will also note that I know that this is an item which I'm sure you'll speak to, that's gone through all of our NPAs, and I know that we're joined by representatives of at least one of our NPAs who I know has been in touch with a number of these other groups and appreciate their work as well. But Councilor Newbeeser, would you be okay with my turning the floor to you to introduce the resolution?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Thank Council President, and yeah, Jonathan, if you want to come up, yeah, please, please come to the desk. I'll be brief and then turn it over to Jonathan just to talk a little bit more about the process and the involvement of the NPAs and why, really, this originated out of the NPAs and so why folks thought it was necessary, and maybe talk through the process a little bit. But briefly, I see this resolution very much as, first, some very basic good governance and really establishing a foundation for which the city and the NPAs can establish a better working relationship, down to making sure that it's explicit that the city staff time we're using to support the NPAs. You know, some of that goes toward leadership development and training, so the NPAs know their legal responsibilities, for example. So what open meeting law means, and sort of all the legal musts, I guess. And so, yeah, I think it's really critical. I mean, there's a lot more work to do, I think we can continue to refine it. The other piece of this resolution that I think is really critical is that, not necessarily in the resolution itself, but this is really an olive branch between city government and the NPAs to try to build some trust and an understanding of our role here in the council, the role of city staff, the administration, and the NPAs, because I really do feel the NPAs are, while independent, a part of city government and a really critical partner to engage in the community and developing policy here at the council. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Jonathan, and we can go from there.
That's fine. Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. Go ahead.
I'm Jonathan Chapel Sokol, I'm on the Steering Committee in Ward 1. Excuse me, and before I begin, I want to thank you, Mayor, for the really kind words about the friends and the library. This is a very exciting time, and we know that together we're going to make something really great. Thank you. I'll give you just a very little bit of history, I'll try to keep this brief. It was in May 2024, the Councilor Newbeeser brought to the City Council a resolution essentially to study, to study and to help define a better definition of the relationship between the city and the NPAs. And to your comments, Councilor Grant, I'd like to read some minutes from that meeting, which were spectacular. So this was a year and a half ago. It said it much better than I could write down and explain it. It was probably the last time I spoke here. Jonathan Chapel Sokol, a member of the Ward 1 NPA Steering Committee, said that the primary inspiration for this proposal comes from the City Council's decision last October to pass a resolution that prescribed specific actions required by the NPAs, which was unconventional and unprecedented and came without consultation from the NPAs themselves, though he acknowledged that the situation the council was trying to address was serious and he appreciated the action. He said that this highlighted a lack of standard set of conditions under which the NPAs should be engaged in city input and city decision-making. He said this resolution would ask the city to work with the NPAs to establish conditions under which elected officials or city administrators seek and consider approval from the NPAs as an advisory group. So this was referred to the CDNR. The CDNR created a working group to go and put something together of which this current resolution that's before you is the work product, the final work product. The working group had three NPA Steering Committee members on it, Councilor Newbeeser and city staff, and that was representatives from the City Attorney's Office and Gillian Anton from CDO. And we worked from, let's see, from July to January, we finally finished the work in March, the final draft came out in March of this year. We decided to bring, rather than bring it to the City Council and then to the NPAs, we thought it made more sense to get the acceptance of the NPAs before the City Council should actually consider it. So over the spring and summer, we took this to all eight wards and asked them to vote for it, vote on it, and all eight wards passed it, and most of them were unanimous, some of them had a couple of abstentions, there were three no votes in the entire city, and the no votes were primarily the result of the fact that there are members of NPAs who think that the NPA should have more authority than they do and than they can. We brought it to the CDNR, CDNR approved it, and that's, and now we're back here. I can talk about some specifics, just go through the resolves or not, depending on what you're interested in. It's, you know, I don't want to waste your time. You're important.
Well, I don't think it would be a waste of time, Jonathan. I mean, I'm happy to, Councilor Newbeeser, were you done with your comments on the item? Or, okay. If you, I know you put a lot of time into this, Jonathan, so if you want to go into it further, would be happy to take a couple more minutes here. Otherwise, I could turn to Councilor Newbeeser for a motion on the item and upon a second can turn to other councillors for any questions or feedback that they have.
We could, assuming that everybody's read it, we could probably just go that way. I want to, I do want to say, it's very clear that this isn't a perfect document, and it's very clear that we can make it better. One of the things that isn't in here but that we would like kind of to keep in everybody's minds is that this should be a living document in the sense that we review, you know, we review it every year, every two years, we see what works, what doesn't work, how things need to be changed, but it's a way to keep the conversation going between leadership and the NPAs. So it's certainly understood that it's not a finished, it's not a finished product, it's a stake in the ground, it's the beginning of the conversation. And with that, I'd
Thank you.
I'd be happy to take questions if there are.
Great. Councilor Newbeeser, could we turn to you for a motion on this item?
I'd move to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Litwin. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Councilor McKnight, and then Carpenter?
Thank you, and thank you for being here, Jonathan, and for all the work that it took to make this happen. I just mostly want to express appreciation and, yeah, I'm a big fan of, in particular, the Ward 6 NPA. It's an amazing forum for community conversation. I've watched the Ward 6 community really tackle some tough issues in that forum, and I'm just so grateful that it exists. And I think a lot of us up here at this table are often hearing from folks in the community, and as we rightly should, you know, wanting us to do more and to change more things and to make more things better. And, well, of course, I welcome those questions. Something that I often say in response is, you know, we need the community's help to move this city forward and to build the future that we all want. And I think this resolution is an example of you all doing that on your own and kind of picking up the ball, moving it forward, being ready to roll up your sleeves and do the work, and I think that's kind of a analogy for the NPAs overall, and I think anything we can do to encourage residents to participate in government in whatever way works best for them, and whatever way feels most accessible, most approachable, is a good thing, and we should do more of it. So I think this is a step in that direction, and I just wanted to thank you for bringing that forward, and I'm happy to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKnight. Councilor Carpenter, and Broderick?
Thank you. I too want to express my support, and I know it's a lot of hard work to get to this. Just two comments, really not relevant to the document itself, but going forward work, I just continue to see a need to express to the community what an NPA is and why it's important for you to go there. And so, any collective work we can do and maybe some support from the city in getting that word out, I think will really be important, because I see some unevenness between NPAs and unevenness in participation, and it won't be valuable unless they participate. The other thing is, in one of the resolve clauses, asking the City Council to essentially inform you of stuff, which we're happy to do, but offline, maybe there's a way to think about who's on point, you know, like bring charter changes to you, and I think the Charter Change Committee is happy to do that, but some NPAs know about that, some don't. So just sort of thinking of a way to get a consistency of informing all NPAs what's on our docket, and I don't know if your NPA support person could do that, or just sort of thinking out loud how to, who does that, and how to get that information to you. Because the NPA committee, for instance, I was just talking to ours, and, you know, her comment was, well, kind of, can you come and tell us what's happening? And I'm happy to do that, but it seemed a little informal, so maybe there's a more formal way we can make sure every NPA knows, you know, that we have five ordinance changes and three charter changes coming down the pike, and just sort of think how we could do that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, in Ward 1, we try to maintain very positive relationships with our city councillors, and we hope that there are specific things we'll ask city councillors to talk about, but then we also hope that city councillors bring those issues to us. It's kind of a, you know, keep the street two-way, open in both directions. But yeah, I think that there's definitely opportunity to clarify how that can be a best practice, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carpenter. Councilor Broderick?
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan, for your work on this. I am supporting this, but kind of building off of what Councilor Carpenter was talking about, and this is for both CDO and for the folks in charge of the NPAs, it's just a, just a statement that like, the NPAs are only as powerful as they are representative, and that includes both just the amount of people that you can get into an NPA and also if then, if who is attending the NPAs is a representative slice of who lives in that ward. I'm particularly referring to younger people, and you can only, you can only do so much to get people to come out to an NPA, they still have to make the decision to come to it, and some NPAs do a better job at that than others. But it's just, it's just something that I think the city and the NPAs as a collective need to make a more concerted effort at doing and having a presence in spaces like our college campuses where there's the indication that this is a space where you can get involved, like was previously said, another way to get involved with the city that you are a resident But yeah, I obviously support this, but, so thank you.
And thank you for that, and one of the motivations behind this was to try to, you know, this is to tie DFA now with the NPAs in a way that we can work together to do outreach, because it's all important. There is, there is no collection of people who get together in a city that is truly representative of the city. Every single, there's no, there's no real way to do that, but we can definitely do better with the NPAs, there's no question about it, and I think it's collaborative work. You know, steering committees are a bunch of volunteers who don't want to spend more than a few hours a month doing this, right? So it's hard to, some of that work might be best done at the city level, and we have to work out how to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Broderick. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? We'll go to Councilor Schacter, and then Bergman.
Thank you, President Traverse. I'll be quick. I mostly just want to express gratitude. I know that this, I've been watching this unfold over many months to finally reach a point where it can be on the floor of the council tonight. I was proud to be part of CDNR and happy to support it then and now, and I think as I watch everything going on at the national level and threats to our democracy and all that we're dealing with, it's so heartening here in Burlington when I see such examples of people engaging in our community and trying to build it up and that we really hold space for diversity of voices to be heard. So I just want to thank you, and again, very proud to be a part of this community and the ways that I think we do so much right amidst a country that isn't always hitting the mark these days, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Schacter. Councilor Bergman?
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Carter, for this. I mean, what this does in my mind is really create a foundation, or at least it sets the plan for us to set a foundation of a very strong and vital NPA system, which will allow us to do a significantly lot more than what we're doing. I'm actually particularly excited about having this framework so we could talk about exciting and I think fairly radical things like participatory budgeting, a radical idea that actually we sort of did with, when we had more money to give to NPAs, and NPAs were involved in doling out much bigger sums of money than they were, than they are now, at least in my recollection over the decades. But this allows us to say, hmm, now that we've got a foundation that actually is strong and vital, what else can we do? And so I want to thank you again for the work that you've done to allow us to actually actualize some dreams that some of us have had for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Counselor Litwin?
I wanted to thank you too, as a surviving NPA Steering Committee member myself, which is what ended up, I guess, getting me more involved civically, so it's important, it's another example of why NPAs are important. I, I want to acknowledge again how much I know, how much work went into this, and that each NPA in the city is so different and so unique. And it's a really interesting sociological exercise. If you're really interested, I encourage you to go out and visit every NPA in the city just once, because it truly is so different. The space is different, the folks are different, the conversations are different, but more importantly, the structure and protocols are very different, which is why I'm so appreciative that you guys have been, this, this will lend itself to a bit more cohesion and support for the NPAs logistically as well. And so it's so important to have, have that, like, I remember I was trying to get folks to talk about bylaws because nobody was following their bylaws and everybody's bylaws were different, and I was trying to figure out, how do we, you know, synchronize bylaws, or do we? And a lot of that had to do with just not having a lot of volunteers. And so I do appreciate this, and I also want to just, I guess, request, and then this is a little bit of a piggyback on Counselor Carpenter's comments, that the NPAs might come together a bit more frequently, even though I know that's like cat wrangling, you know, at the next level, to sort of think about structure, because what happens, what I have seen happen is one group of volunteers comes in, they all leave, or a big chunk of them leave, and then a new one comes in and so forth. And so I've seen that transition probably four times just in six years in my NPA. And, and so change is good, but change is change. And so we don't have, for example, councilors in my ward, in, which is the last merged NPA, 4-7, which we're very proud of, I think, we don't have set time on the agenda, for example. So if I want to speak, I either have to have like a prepared sort of ask at least a month in advance to sort of, and, and possibly longer if they already have a full agenda, and that will make, or I have to make like a quick announcement during public comment. And some, while, while I love the language, we will endeavor in good faith to consult, I, I will continue to do that, but I would hope that maybe the NPAs could come together and talk more about, how much time should city councilors have? Should they have set time on the agenda? Should they, in, in my mind, perhaps in the New North End, we might trade off, for example, like maybe Counselor Carpenter answers questions and presents, and so we're not taking up too much of their time. But at the same time, I always abstain, I might be one of those abstention votes, because I really believe that you should have autonomous governance. And so once I became a city councillor, I really never wanted to cast a vote on governance issues in the NPA for that reason. So I invite you and my NPA and all the NPAs to think about what that looks like, because I think it's changed so many times in every NPA as volunteers come and go. And to just also echo what Counselor Schacter said, what a great thing we have. I think this was started by then-mayor Bernie Sanders, if I recall. And so, you know, what a, what a fantastic tool that we have here in our community during what is a really troubling time for our country. So I love going to NPA even when it gets a little bit dicey. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Were you all set, Counselor Litwin? You still had some time, but, okay, all right. Is, yeah, that's good. Use the beeps more often. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote then. All in favor of the motion made by Counselor Newbezer, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last item on our deliberative agenda is item 6.4. It is our accountability list communication. Counselor Litwin, you had asked to remove this item to our deliberative agenda, and so I would turn to you on the item.
Thank you. And I know we're doing record time tonight, so I don't want to hinder that in any way, but I do appreciate, since we had a lighter agenda tonight, being able to just have a, a quick conversation, or maybe it's not a conversation, but I wanted to share my thoughts on our accountability list. And what's very nice is we finally, we, we just checked two things off, one last meeting and one this meeting, that are on the accountability list. So, for example, CDNR, we delivered both, thanks to Counselor Newbezer, we delivered on the NPA resolution, and now also we have delivered on the last consent agenda, perhaps it was two meetings ago, we delivered our recommendations on addressing and mitigating syringe litter in the community. That one shouldn't come off yet because we still have action to take, but I did want to raise the question of sort of like, you know, how frequently are we revisiting this as a group, as a, as a, as a body at this table, and making sure that we're hearing from, particularly from chairs of boards, about their items that are still on the accountability list, at least at a regular pace, for giving folks like ordinance and charter, because we just got a bunch of stuff sent over to us. But some of these things go back to 2023. Some of them, you know, like the Bureau thing hasn't had an update since March. I don't see the police, excuse me, the Public Safety Hub resolution, so I don't know if that was intentionally pulled off of the accountability list, because I know we pulled it a while back to add it to the accountability list. And so I just want to, and also just, are we done with the establishing of violation reporting incentivization pilot? Has that been, I know I've had a conversation a long time ago with Counselor Carpenter, but has that been reported back to the body in, so that we're being transparent with the public, but we're also being accountable to ourselves to make sure that we're clearing this list of, of items as we frequently add new things to it? Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll just take a moment to respond. This is a list that's prepared by Lori in a very excellent way, and I very much appreciate Lori's time and attention to it. I will say that it's a list that, when prior Council President Paul was in this seat, I know that, that she, in collaboration with Lori, spent quite a bit of time on cleaning it up. And so I, I appreciate, Counselor Litwin, your placing this on, on the deliberative to, to keep us honest, and I think it's what former President Paul would want us to do as well when we take a look at it. This is, as it says up at the top, a, a living document or a working document of sorts, and it is, it is intended to, to keep us honest as well with respect to where items are, when items are sent off to committee. They, they are not done until the committee takes some sort of dispositive action with respect to it, either voting it down in committee or voting it one way or another back to the full council. And so I think my, my suggestion would be that if folks have any updates, particularly committee chairs to the list as it is right now, certainly Lori and I would, would welcome those updates if an item has, has not been disposed of one way, or, excuse me, if an item has been disposed of one way or another, we would, we would welcome those updates. If there's an item that's missing, as you've raised here, Counselor Litwin, we're happy to take that into consideration and, and update the document as necessary. I think my suggestion would be, the suggested action tonight is to waive the reading and to place this communication on file, but if we were to do that this evening, my, my commitment would be that we would work to make any necessary updates between now and our next meeting and, and have a responsive document at that point in time. Those are just my thoughts, though. Is there any other councillor that has comments on item 6.4 now? Yep, Counselor McKnight?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this up to our attention, Counselor Litwin. I just wanted to offer up, you know, as, as you were talking, I was sort of thinking to myself about how I might use this document in the future, so just to offer those thoughts among colleagues. You know, I think this is on the consent agenda for every meeting, and so perhaps, I mean, what I will do if others want to do this too, then that's up to them, but, you know, it's a good reminder to just look at this a little bit more carefully, and if there are specific priorities we have that are moving their way through committee we haven't checked in on in a while, if, as you mentioned, Counselor Litwin, you saw an item that you, you know, you worked on, you sent to committee, and it's somehow fallen off of this, you know, I think we could all perhaps set the attention to make a review of this document, part of our council routine, so to speak, and encourage conversation among colleagues ahead of time. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Any other comments on this item? That will conclude our deliberative agenda then, which brings us to item seven, committee reports. Is there any councillor with a committee report? Counselor Bergman and then Grant?
Sure. So the accountability list is a, is a, is a great segue, because I, I have in the past on the ordinance committee given us these things. I thought that we had actually referred back to this council the item, which is noted here, as the mandatory retirement age, because we have passed that out of committee, and I, I must be getting old, because I thought we actually had passed that at a prior meeting, and I'm seeing a shaking of the head. So we did that, but I couldn't quite find it in my quick scan, but we, we passed that out of committee to come back to the council with a recommendation to maintain the, to do the 63-year-old retirement age and to keep the jurisdiction. And I made that report the last meeting. I had thought that this was going to make it onto, maybe it was this agenda, but it seems not to have made it here, so I will check on that. We are meeting on this coming, whoops, wrong month, this coming Friday, and will be dealing with the, the item that came to us from the Public Works Commission that we have been going line by line on parking changes. This is the third meeting that we have dealt with this on. This is a major rewrite of, of commission authority as it relates to a number of areas where the state and federal regulations on safety implicate our need to act more quickly in things like rights on red and school zones, and we've just been dealing with the details of that. And it looks to me that we're going to be finishing that. That has definitely been, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, if former Council President Sharon Buescher is still on, something that we have been going through in excruciating detail, and I apologize for me picking lots of nits, but I believe that it is a better product out of it. And as a result, we're going to be dealing with that on Friday as well as a more substantive conversation about the financial disclosure matter that was referred to us. We have dealt with both the park, the parking lot and fuel purchases matters at, at the committee level, and we have requested attorney opinions related to authority and other details. And that's just prudent, and that's like the start, because there are a lot of issues that relate to that. There have been favorable conversations related to the substance of the policies, but in terms of just, again, the mechanics, that's something that we are waiting for. And I'm hoping, and we had asked for that to be, to those opinions to be brought back to us on the 20th, which is our meeting after this. We meet twice a month, and, you know, and I want to thank my fellow committee members for engaging in that level of, of work. Councilors Barlow and Carpenter and Kane are putting in significant amount of work on that. Let me see what else I've got here. And the last one I will, we have dealt with, and I, I apologize for not making sure that the documents got sent to, to us regarding the incentivization. So the committee has dealt with that. There is a memo from the Attorney's Office, and that will get posted on the next meeting in either the consent agenda or the, the ordinance committee section, just a, a memo there that we can deal with if need be at that, that meeting, and it will be up to the, the president to, to decide where that goes. It doesn't really matter to me, but we'll, we'll get that information. But that has been dealt with as well. And I think that, that is the entire list of, of items that this council has sent to the, to the ordinance committee, and I appreciate all the work that you give us. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Counselor Grant?
Thank you. Our last Public Safety Committee was on October 23rd. We had Tammy Buddha, who leads the Street Outreach Team. It was kind of an interesting conversation because she gave us information where we could really hear and take a look at the history of that team in the city, how they started out, and what exactly is, what they do, and how they're embedded with the Police Department right now. So I really appreciate her time and the questions that she answered. And in addition to Tammy Buddha, we also got to spend some time with our State's Attorney, Sarah George. That was also an interesting conversation, as the mayor mentioned earlier, about the new special court that is up and running. Sarah George is very excited about that and really looks forward to it being an effective tool to address the backlog of cases that we have. And so she discussed a number of other issues as well. So I encourage people to go to Civic Clerk and then just kick on the calendar for October 23rd and the Public Safety Committee meeting, and Meeting Media, and you'll be able to watch that information, as well as having a report from our fire chief. Our next REIB committee meeting will be November 18th. Last month's meeting was canceled in lieu of having a gathering with members of the public to ask them for input on the charter process, which is being taken up by our charter committee. So we will continue to talk about that, as well as this will be the first meeting with the new director, Kelly Perkins. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you. The License Committee will meet Wednesday, November 12th, at 3:30 PM at the Buescher Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. Is there any other councillor with a committee report? Counselor McKnight?
I'll be brief. The next Charter Change Committee at this point is, committee meeting is Monday, November 10th, where we'll be looking again at the REIB Charter Change, the Tax Abatement Charter Change, and the Fiscal Ceiling Increase. I don't know what, what is the right term for it? Increasing the
Our annual borrowing authority.
Annual borrowing threshold. We are busy in the Charter Change Committee, and we are up against the deadline to get things on the ballot, so stay tuned, because we are going to try to have more meetings than just that one ahead of our council work in December.
Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Is there any other councillor with a committee report? All right, we will turn now to City Council, General City Affairs, to include climate, public health and safety emergency updates. Is there any councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Okay. Counselor Grant, sorry, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor covered the Vermont State Troopers that are in downtown Burlington. Very happy to see them, and just the couple of days that they've been here, there's been a lot of feedback about their presence. I kind of want to discuss what the public, especially central district residents, can expect. This, these patrols are going to be on the Church Street Marketplace area and around City Hall Park. So, to be quite honest, there may be some displacement, which is something that we have seen before in the central district, and it might occur again. But I believe that this will create an environment downtown with regards going into the holiday season. November and December are going to be really crucial for our businesses in the central district. Anyone who's done retail knows that first quarter on any normal circumstances is, is a slower quarter. So, the fourth quarter, especially with what's been going on downtown with the construction, with concerns around community safety, et cetera, it's going to be really important this year. So, hopefully, because these are volunteer shifts, we do have troopers that will volunteer to take most of the, the shifts. I would caution people with regards to some of the activity that we have seen in City Hall Park, going back to the fact that some of the individuals that are in the park are not technically doing anything illegal. It is not going to be the trooper's job to push people out of the park that are not violating ordinances or doing anything illegal, although it's been a difficult conversation in the community to acknowledge that, seeing people who are unhoused, or seeing people who are struggling at this time, can be uncomfortable, excuse me, for people. So, I just want us to keep all of that in mind in terms of looking at the positives, but also acknowledging the continued struggles that we have in certain areas. I want to give a special shout out to the King Street Laundry located at 72 King Street. They have a kind of a box. When you think about the little libraries that are around town, it's bigger, and it's a necessities box. So, we would really love people to consider either donating to King Street Laundry, or to drop by, and specifically, they're looking for toiletry items. Just think everyday things that we might take for granted, like tooth, toothbrushes, toothpaste, also maybe warm socks and things like that. And it gives a drop in space where people can go and grab things that they might need. This can be first aid, it can be any number of things. And we do shout out that on Wednesdays, they allow from 12 to 3, our unhoused neighbors to be able to wash their clothes for free, and they always are looking for volunteers who may be willing to help out during that time. I did it several weeks ago, and it was a fantastic experience, so I highly recommend it to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on General City Affairs? Councilor Litwin?
Thank you. Just a few things. First, I want to thank, really, all the crew at the Burlington Fire Department, but also thank the police department as well. I did a ride along with Corporal Yee and Corporal Kalig a few weeks ago, and I did my second ride along with Engine One on Halloween night for eight hours. So, I stayed with them, basically a whole nother workday on top of my workday, before I finally hit my wall. And then I thought, they have 40 more hours of this for a lot of these guys, so we're really lucky to have them. And I had the privilege of really getting to see what their interactions are like, where the state is failing people, where we as a community are, are letting folks down, and where we're letting our, our fire staff down, our firefighters and EMTs. Downtown was thriving, is one way of putting it, and it was very bustling, we'll say. I have concerns about how many times we had to go to UVM for serious levels of intoxication that required medical intervention. And I, and it reminded me about something that I kept hearing over and over about, you know, how basically Station 3, and this didn't come up the other night, but Station 3 is basically constantly, that's on Mansfield Avenue, you know, constantly having to go to UVM. And so, as we think about pilot funding, and as we think about, which is voluntary, and as we think about our relationship with UVM, which continues to come into this, into this space even tonight, I think we really need to think about how, how much we are giving to UVM in terms of our public safety. And also, students make up like 30% of our city population, and so, of our, what, $38 million, something to that effect, general fund is police and fire. You know, we need, we need to have a real serious conversation about how many times we had to roll fire trucks and ambulances up to UVM on Halloween night. And I'm glad we did, because every single one of those cases, I was very glad the students called for their friends. Additionally, I wanted to say that when I did my ride along with the police on a Saturday, also a Saturday night, there were only four or five officers on for the whole city. And that's on a Saturday night. So, we are really lucky to have VSP presence here, and I'm very glad that, that the mayor and the governor have come to an arrangement on that. Many of our officers are working a lot of overtime on top of that, so that we don't have four or five. And we're just not hiring enough officers for 100 reasons. And I know VSP is in a similar situation, where they don't have all the resources and staffing that they need, which is why these are voluntary. So, I'm grateful that they're here. That being said, I know that this, this plan for police, for VSP support was, was a negotiation and a conversation between the governor, the mayor, and Chief Burke. And I just, I just, I still don't feel like this goes far enough. My concerns are that these high-visibility foot patrols are really only from noon to 8:00, and only in a very specific area of our downtown. We also, I'll take what I can get on the Belt Line, quite frankly. It's, it's an incredibly dangerous road, and I only recently had to go to multiple meetings about how dangerous the Belt Line and Plattsburgh Avenue are, organized by people who live in that neighborhood. And again, you know, the enforcement hours are, as available, from, for four hours, five days a week. And so, I just, I don't know what that negotiation looked like. I don't know who said no to what and yes to what, and who offered, you know, whether the governor offered something or didn't offer something. But I will say, I, I hope that we can build on this, and that this isn't where we stop with VSP support, while also acknowledging that VSP does not have what they need, that we don't want to make Chief Burke's job any harder than it already is, and that we do need help downtown, particularly during the, the holiday shopping season for our business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Litwin. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on General City Affairs? Okay. The next item then is City Council President updates. I'll just use a moment here briefly. I could have mentioned this on General Council, City Affairs as well, but just responsive to another issue that was raised. And knowing that both the mayor and I were engaged in discussions with the governor's team around the, the state's plan for Burlington, I, I do know Marin would welcome your chiming in as well here, if I get this wrong in any way, but that the governor's team was very respectful of the chief having a role in whatever additional state law enforcement resources would be present here in Burlington. And so, I do trust that the governor's team has been working closely with, with Chief Burke, and will continue to work closely with Chief Burke with respect to what, what our needs here are. But appreciate folks raising the points that they did this evening. The point that I wanted to note on City Council President is just a flag for folks, if you didn't notice it, that we have posted our council meeting calendar and Board of Finance calendar through August of next year. So, we approved that this evening. We had previously approved a calendar that had a meeting on Monday, January 5th, and so I just wanted to be clear that at the top of that, we have canceled that meeting on Monday, January 5th, and instead, we'll be hosting it a week after that. I also just wanted, in terms of timeline here, as we amazingly reach the end of the year, as Councilor McKnight knows, as chair of our charter change committee, our meeting on Monday, December 15th, is going to be the last practical date that the council could approve of, of any charter change. We then, on January 20th, you'll see on the schedule that we approved tonight, will have our first public hearing on any proposed charter changes. That'll be connected to our regular meeting we have. We then, on January 22nd, will have our mandatory second public hearing on any proposed charter changes. As a reminder to folks here, that is not a meeting that we need a quorum for, certainly would welcome and encourage everyone to attend, but I know that that's two meetings in the same week. So, just as you mark your calendars, just know that that meeting on the 22nd is not necessarily one that we need a quorum for. After those public hearings, it'll be our meeting on Monday, January 26th, that that will be the last practical date for any revisions to proposed charter amendments by the city council. That's also the last practical date for the city council to approve any non-charter ballot questions. Non-charter ballot questions don't require the same public hearing schedule, so we have a bit more time with those. If there's any non-charter ballot question that is delivered by voter petition, my understanding from the Assistant City Clerk, Sarah Montgomery, is that any non-charter voter petition would need to be delivered by January 15th of 2026. So, hopefully, if people are able to connect the dots there, I just wanted to, given that we had approved our schedule here this evening moving forward, to flag those dates for folks in our calendars. With that, seeing no other business before the council, and absent objection, we will adjourn our meeting at 8:53 PM. Thank you.